Call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Do we have a quorum, Crystal?
Mayor Moss is absent. Councilmember Contreras is present. Councilmember Gillian is present. Councilmember Rennenbaum is absent. Mayor Pro Tim Young is present. And Councilmember Crummel is present. Mayor Pro Tim Tim.
All right, if everyone would rise, we'll have a moment of silence for our meeting. Thank you very much. If you would join us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is public comments. Mr. Marsh, where shall I send? If you could come up and speak. You have three minutes to speak and we don't have any other speaker, so if you could try to keep it to three minutes, but I won't.
I will try.
Yeah, well, you won't. Thank you.
I thought I would be last.
Oh, I apologize for that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Seventy crown.
Greetings. I'm here to have my drive entrance returned to the specs similar to what existed before the Crown Road Project took it away. I designed and paid for the drive which allowed for easy access, especially when pulling trailers. I have backed a 25-foot goose neck trailer up this drive before. Today, I would be hesitant to attempt that given the entrance you put in place. With the existing drive entrance, I've had, I have already had a hard time getting a 12-foot U-Haul trailer driven forward through the entrance. Visitors to my home have commented on the entrance. My wife is scared that she's going to fall off. We are tired of this entrance and want back what we put in place. This road project has been absolutely miserable to live through. I've tried to work with your employees professionally to get this complication corrected, but the lack of professionalism and communication, mainly communication on your employees, brings me here today. I have a timeline of conversations if you'd like to go through them. One note, until I came to City Hall on January the 30th, asking for the city manager, I was no longer getting replies to emails or return phone calls. I started last October. To start, it would have been nice to have been informed the drive entrance was going to be measured and redone in a different format. I would have done my own measurements at that moment. As is, I have had to resort to Google Earth. I believe I can factually show you the photo, through photos, this huge difference. The problem is that your team took measurements and put a quote, "proposed plan" in the project. This proposed plan does not match what I had in place. I had even asked your people to put my culvert up on my property because I wanted to keep it. They could not meet that expectation. If I had that culvert, I would clearly be able to show you the difference today. Your proposed plan include, your proposed plan includes flares at the road edge which are unusable. Your employees continue to look at this plan and measurements, not accepting or admitting the fact that what is there is not at all usable. All of what I had was usable. If a tire enters this part, the unusable, it will drop an axle to the concrete, and this has already happened. I will go through the pictures identifying all these facts. Another issue for me with the Crown Road Project is the six times my ISP cable had been cut, photos included, costing me thousands of dollars. Two professionals doing remote work lost billing hours and days of vacation. As I said, this project has been miserable. This attitude is equal among neighbors per conversations. So my request is to close the unusable radial sides and put up curves. I will show in a picture. No, I did not have curves before, but given all that I have had to go through to get to this point, I'm not asking for much. Also, you put curving on five other drives up the hill from me that did not have curves before. I also request to be notified of any and all activity correcting this error. I also desire to approve measurements and forms that are put down there prior to pouring of concrete. Let me go through the photos. Photo A. That was my drive before. Okay. Here's the road edge, it's 29 feet. If you will notice, all of this, this was put in by the mail person. All of this was usable when you turn off the road. What has really happened is you moved the road over, I believe, two feet. Okay? And so now, you have this flared edge out here, because per Gretchen, this is down here at the road, it's 27 feet. All of this on both sides. Sorry, I was trying to recreate this photo identically so that you could overlay them to see that they're not the same. This part out here is unusable. If you have a tire that enters that part, you're going to fall off, period. Item C is where I measured what was at the road. When he, this comes up with 29 feet. Obviously, it's very close to what your people measured. Photo D is the big thing showing the difference. If you go back to photo A, I tried to put that in there. This diagonal across here is if you're representing a car turning in there, and I'm talking going from the south to north up Crown Road. That diagonal is 36 feet. That's what I had, as shown here by Google Earth. And I've used Google Earth for many, many things. Put an electric line, missed it by two feet. Item E, the square footage that I had in a drive entrance. Yours isn't even close. Item F, I'm trying to show you here that you can compare across the street to the drive of the people across the street. Let's talk about item G, because your people can't see this. Hopefully, you can. If you will look closely, that drive is not even in line with my drive. Okay? I'm standing in the middle of the road taking the picture. You look over here.
I believe we've hit the three minutes past, so if you could try to add.
This is serious. I've been working since October to get this resolved. Here's a picture of it already happening. Here's my proposal to you. Item J is to fill in both sides over here, the curves, get rid of that useless curve, fill that in, and put curves on it. That is my request.
Great, thank you very much. In case you aren't aware, we are not able to discuss, it's not on the agenda, so council can have no action on your presentation.
When can I expect a reply?
I would say you, it could be requested to be on the agenda, but your replies would be from staff. Unless it's on the agenda for council, council doesn't have any ability to address it. So it would be requesting that it would be coming from staff to put on the agenda.
I finally received this at 3:06 PM today, from Gretchen.
Thank you. All right, the first item on consent agenda is to approve the city council minutes from the council meeting January 23rd, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for January 23rd, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the city's first quarter financial report. Jake Weber. Good evening.
This should be fairly straightforward compared to some of the reports we've had in the past, to be honest with you. So the financials are pretty clear, hadn't been anything too unusual. As always, just kind of going to run through the funds, but few things to highlight. So property tax revenue, we're down about 565,000 from last year. Now, some of that obviously is due to the rate decrease, right? Fire Department's not with the city, so we would decrease the rate. Some of that's timing, in terms of when we're getting some collections on that. So we're keeping an eye on it. The reality is by the end of February or March, we'll really have a good feel of, are we actually behind on collections and it's a concern? Or it's just people paid late, that, you know, President District got us the money late? Because these are as of December 31, right? So most people aren't going to pay, whether it be late December, early January, so you're not going to collect till January, February, here in the next few weeks. So we'll have more information shortly, but it's just something to keep an eye on, that we are down on that for what we'd expect. And then also, sales tax is down a little bit from last year. It's down about 34,000. And obviously, we've been used to some substantial increases over the last few years, so that's something where it's started to plateau and actually come down a little bit from what we've gotten the last few years. And so again, I know Brian's been looking at that and, you know, trying to determine some reasons for that. We may hit budget, it's hard to tell now, and maybe a little low, but the good thing is, you know, if there's ever been a year where some of these are a little bit lower, general fund has some more flexibility this year, right? With some of the decreased costs that you've had in the past with that fire department. On the expense side, honestly, everything is fairly straightforward there. There's really nothing large, unusual, over budget, anything like that. You know, payroll's down, if you're looking at the chart, 275,000. Again, that's because the fire department's not on where it was last year, if you're looking year over year. Water and wastewater, both those actually are having a really good start to the year. So your water revenue is up 140,000 from last year, and wastewater is up about 113. And like wastewater, the new fee structure started basically October, and I think it actually finally started hitting in November. And we were averaging last year per month in wastewater, I think we got up to about 70-ish per month, and we're over 100,000 a month in revenue now. So that's really helped to bridge that gap that we are concerned about in terms of being able to meet debt obligations and things like that in that fund. So that's helped to bring in some additional revenue. So that's obviously a positive sign on that fund where you really needed some extra money, money on that fund with the extra debt coming on. You can, you can see on there, expense wise, you know, we're trending below budget, but again, that's because no debt has been paid yet, at least you're through December. So just normal operating expenses, again, to date, and if you look at the detail, really nothing out of line, nothing out of budget so far on that. One thing on wastewater, I will say, so we, we're getting about 50,000 a month in interest on the money that's sitting in that fund that we're going to use to build the plant. It's showing as income on this, but obviously, it's earmarked, it's restricted, but it is good, or at least we're getting about 5% on that cash that's sitting there, so that's helpful. The issuance that y'all just got is not reflected on these financials. So the additional debt, I think we just got funded a few weeks ago, so that's, these are, that's not reflected on here. And then just a few other comments. Most of the, so the road bond, most of that's been spent. Cash available at the end of December is about 435,000 in that account. However, that, the drainage bond, there's still about 3.1 million, and I know there was some discussion about, there may, financially, maybe some review of, should some of the money that was spent out of the road account be allocated to actually drainage work? So there may be something there to look at in terms of, it was paid out of one, but really should have been paid out of drainage. But from a cash standpoint, that's where those are at, but just something to be aware of. And then on the Fort Worth Waterline Project, there's about 1.4 million left to be spent. So we've spent all the money. We got 727,000 back from Fort Worth on the reimbursement. Yeah, and then there's another about 700,000 that was just sitting in the, in the bond account. So I know there may be some plans for that cash, but just want to make you aware that the project's basically done, so there's just some extra cash that needs to be determined how that would be spent. So that's main things for Q1. Again, nothing unexpected or out of the ordinary. Any questions?
One quick comment on the sales tax. We got a presentation from Zack Tax last week, and because we were, we had an audit done, there are some things that we're going to do, where there's some revenues that are not coming in that are going to other communities that we're going to try to recapture. But another one was an interesting chart that he showed me, and it's interesting that in an election year, no one's brought this up, but sales tax across the state is lagging. And he did a geometric chart, and everything in Dallas-Fort Worth to Austin to Houston, their sales taxes are down from last year. And so it's a, it was an interesting little presentation. I have that available to council if y'all'd like to take a look at it, but.
Didn't you mention construction's a big part of that?
Construction's another part of that. Building services, residential permits are down, so typically what happens is they'll get the concrete locally, they rent the tools locally, and so that's also impacting it. The analysis from Zack was essentially if we recoup some of this other income that's going to other communities, and a lot of that's Amazon and stuff like that, so it's not, nothing deliberate. And then we see interest rates coming back down, talking to home builders and stuff, they're thinking if it gets in the fives, they've got a lot of pinned up demand, so we'll start seeing some of that stuff coming back.
Jake, quick question. On the Fort Worth Waterline Project, is there restrictions on that money?
Yes.
Yeah. Specific, well, what I would say is specifically about half of it. So the UMB bank count is kind of the escrow agent where that was initially deposited, and so usually what happens is, you know, we get funded, and then in order for those funds to get released, we have to submit to them qualified expenses. And so we would need, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jake.
I said, we would have to have a reason for those to be released.
The bond covenant says, it's broadly written, so any construction improvements for the water system, but those expenditures have to be approved by the Water Development Board. We have a couple of plans, because we're working in conjunction with Hudson Oaks. One of the things, just off the cuff, is we built 750,000, is it 750 tank or, yeah, 750,000 gallons, excuse me, tank, acquiring property that's just adjacent to it and constructing another 750,000 gallon tank. And one would be designated for Hudson Oaks, the other one would be designated for Willow Park. And so that way, we're not, it makes it operate a lot easier that way as well.
But that would require design.
That would require, yes.
Permitting and.
Yes. And so when I say proposed, this is me and the city of Hudson Oaks having a conversation. So this isn't nowhere near ready for you guys to consider yet.
Okay. But we do feel all the expenses are done. Contractors complete.
Everybody's paid?
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Jake? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the city's first quarter financial report as stated.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, the next item is to authorize the use of hotel occupancy tax funds for billboard advertising. Tony.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council. At the November 28th, 2023 meeting, city council approved the use of the city's hotel occupancy tax funds for advertising space on the eastbound side of the Lamar billboard located on the southeast corner of City Hall property. The sign was installed on January 30th, 2024, and its feedback has been extremely favorable. Did you see it? Do you like it? Lamar has informed us that the contract for the space is currently available for rent on the westbound side. The rate is the same as it was for the eastbound side, the $31,680 per side for one year, billed on 13 four-week intervals, and it includes the initial cost of $480 for the artwork. The fee of $480 is charged each time the city requests a change in artwork, as is for the other side. Funds for this expense are currently available in the city's hotel occupancy tax account. State recommends authorization of the use of the hot funds for billboard advertising on the westbound Lamar billboard sign referenced and effective as of the state or as soon as is next available.
Can you remind me, what's, what are we getting in that fund each month from the new, from the hotels?
What is it? I'm sorry.
Like, how much do we receive each month into that account?
Into the fund? I don't know how much.
What, what are we getting? It's more, right, 24?
24, so.
Per month, right?
So easily cover, two months easily, of what we receive covers this.
And that also includes one hotel not paying?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
So otherwise, it's like 17.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Tony, or?
No question, but I just want to say I'm very much in favor of being able to control the message on both sides of that board, as it represents right here at City Hall, and would like to have favorable advertising and being, like I said, being able to control what that side says to the, we're not, we're not giving advertising where advertising doesn't need to be due. So I think control is the, a very favorable aspect of this, and with no other plans or use for that hotel occupancy tax, I would definitely say yes to this.
Would you like to make a motion?
I will, yes. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the use of hotel occupancy funds for billboard advertising as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
You gonna do rock, paper, scissors?
All right, any other questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda, and the last item on the agenda, is discussion action to approve the 2023 racial profiling report. Lieutenant Hamilton will present and answer questions.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Pro Tim. What you should have in your packet is a copy of the racial profiling report that we're required to send to the state every year. I have reviewed the numbers within our racial profile report and have not found any instances of racial profiling within the city limits of Willow Park.
All right. Any questions? Comments?
Does the county have their racial profiling report, Doug?
I know the DA's office does.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept as presented the racial profiling report presented by our patrol lieutenant.
Right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much. Right, I do not believe that we will be doing executive session.
No ma'am.
Our attorney is not here, and we don't have anything there, so city council comments. Do we have any comments or requests from council?
I have none.
None from Councilmember Gillian?
Wastewater treatment plant, when does, when do we start?
We, we signed contracts two weeks ago?
Last week.
Last week.
A lot of signatures.
A lot. ETA?
We're thinking that we'll have the pre-chron report in March 1st, but then it doesn't proceed on March 1st.
Okay.
Impossible breaking ground. When?
March 1ish. We could break ground anytime, but, because technically, we already maybe. Technically, we kind of already have.
Any other questions or requests? When are we due for staff reports?
That would typically be, we can do that the next one. We're also going to do board appointments that night as well.
Okay.
So I didn't know if y'all, how y'all wanted to handle that, but.
Okay, so we could get an update.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm going to say updates from staff on our road project, our wastewater treatment, those would be, if we're due for that, I think that's a good idea and can cover some of the questions.
Yeah.
Sure. No, I won't be here the 27th, but y'all can, y'all can cover updates without me. I'm sure.
Okay.
So yes, updates, if we could get that from.
Okay. Got that, Crystal.
Yes, sir.
Any other? All right, city manager comments.
Various staff members are going to be out at trainings for the next month or so. That seems to be the flavor of the spring. I personally will be at the TCMA mid-year conference in Granberry on the 22nd and 23rd, and I'll be in the Texas City Manager Study Club on the March 20, or, excuse me, February 29th and March 1st. Just a heads up, March 12th is our first meeting in March. It's also spring break. I already know one council member that's going to be out. That person may or may not be at the DIAS, but I know one person that's going to be out for that. Clearly, we want to have a quorum. If you guys know that you're going to be out on spring break, let us know, and the sooner we know, we can make accommodations.
I may be out.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't know if that takes us down without a quorum, because.
Let me.
Could we move it to?
We could.
I was going to say.
We could, we could move it to March, was that the 5th? The week before, I think, 6th, maybe?
I'm out of time.
Yeah.
It's hard, uh, sorry. It would be March 5th.
That would be a week after the next council meeting.
Is that Tuesday?
Yes, they would be back-to-back meetings.
Right.
I've gone through Thursday of that week, walking back to Thursday of that week.
Okay.
So I guess I would propose that we have the meeting on the 27th and discuss whether we want to have it the week after spring break, or whether we have a quorum for the week after spring break.
Right, yes.
But then that would.
We, yeah. And we can do it however y'all want to, I just want to make sure we have.
I think it, it's going to depend on business, like what items need to be acted on before the, the second, if there's anything, so. I would propose that that be discussed at the next meeting, which I won't be at.
All right, just want. All right, just wanted to put that out there.
All right. There are no other questions or discussion? Did you have anything else to present?
We beat Kansas by 29 points last night.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to be adjourned.
I'll say that.
All right, all in favor?
Well, I had a Lee.
All right, we are adjourned at 6:25. Thank you.